All right, we'd like to welcome everybody to City Council meeting tonight. We're really glad to see everybody in the audience today and encourage you, if there's something on the agenda that you would like to speak about, to take a form and fill it out and get it up to our city clerk Cindy. We also are welcome any public comments at the beginning of our City Council meeting, if you wish. Well, we'll go ahead and start the meeting with roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hockes, absent. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember B Smith, here. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, here. Mayor Smith, here.
Do we have anyone from the audience that wishes to speak to City Council for the public announcement? Okay, then we'll go ahead and invite Joe, if you don't mind coming on up. Joe Garkovich is from Mercy Today Ministries and he's going to start us off with the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Loving God, we thank you for another day in which to serve you. As we gather this evening to do this important work, we pray for your blessings and your grace. We pray that you would grant us an open mind and an open heart to hear all the opinions of those here present who wish to speak. We pray that you would give us compassion and courage to make the right decisions that would benefit all those who reside here in this city. In all these prayers, we send to you in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so there's one more offer for anyone who wants to speak to City Council. Now is it a good time to do that unless it's something on the agenda? In that case, we'll move on to City Council member announcements, if we have any. These have to do with the Culver's. Councilmember Meisner.
Two issues. One, I almost had an accident this morning. As I'm coming back from Eight Mile Hill, I witnessed them actually doing some groundwork for our signs. And the same episode happened on the east end of town on Sunday as I'm returning to town, that they're actually doing groundwork. So, took us two and a half years or whatever to get to this point, but...
Oh, longer than that. Holy...
Well, I was trying to be a little on the positive side. My next comment, I don't know if it's a comment, but we've had a change in the agenda where our open mic seems to have been removed.
And I believe that was done quite some time ago.
Prior to me.
And I believe it had to do with probably time, manner, and place of public comments. But we can do some research and see if we can figure out when that happened and if there was a specific...
Well, the original decision came about as one of our non-strategic retreats. It's my understanding that that was a council decision to add that at the beginning of the meeting, to give any public... The first 15 minutes of that was reserved for just pure public comment. I would request that that's put back on there with council's, I guess, reapproval.
Elliot, did you have something to say on that matter? Go ahead and...
So, is it 15 minutes? I remember, I remember the public speaking, but I don't remember if there were rules behind it. Were there three minutes allowed per person?
It was the same, it was the same time limit rule. It's just that we would reserve 15 minutes.
What is that, what is the difference between citizens' respect or request to speak to City Council? What is the difference?
That's more of an unofficial request to address council and in particular, I mean, about a specific matter versus...
Okay. Just announcements.
As an example, if Ed Norton wanted to get up there tonight and tell us what a good job we're doing, he could just do that unannounced.
You should totally do that.
You think you will?
And that's kind of a suggestive comment, but it was just an opportunity for anybody in the public to walk up there and give us their mind with no request, nothing else.
And I think I remember it being taken off because of time's sake. Meetings were running very long at the time. Is that...
I would hope that's documented somewhere, but...
I think that's what I recall. I think we do have a council retreat coming up and we should probably revisit that topic. So if you wouldn't mind putting that on our agenda for that, that would be great, especially now that we have a lot of new council members. I must have some announcement from Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that I went to and others on council have went to. But the 6th of February, up in Cripple Creek, Newmont Mining hosted their city or community meeting, Community Relations Meeting. I went up there to hear what they had to say. That was very interesting. We'll likely, they'll stay tuned, we'll likely be able to arrange a tour for council members and city staff, whoever would probably like to go. That's kind of in the works. We did have the tour of the city and that was... Madam Mayor, was that at your instigation? You may, I don't want to steal your thunder on that, if you're going to speak on that.
Oh, no, go ahead and go for it. And actually, it was Dan Nordberg from the SBA, the Small Business Administration. He's a regional manager over several states and he reached out to Canyon City, since we have a new mayor and new council, and he wanted to learn more of what they can do to help support Canyon City. We had a meeting with Dan and then that tour came out of fruition from that.
And that tour was several agencies, all associated with economic development or different parts of the government that can assist cities. And it was really, it was really well received. It was a great tour. Got to see St. Scholastica, got to, you know, visit several places in the city and drive around. We had the trolley was driven by Will Colan. That was really nice. On February 19th, we do have the Vision Committee meeting, which is talking about the 2018 building code. Also coming up on February 20th, we have the US-50 Access Control Plan Open House. And then also in February, don't forget this one, coffee with the mayor here at 9:00 AM on the 27th.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Just speaking of the tour, we gave, threw everybody in a trolley, took them around parts of Canyon City that some, some of the folks who came had never been to Canyon City before, others had only been to some of the main big spots. They were able to see parts of Canyon they had never seen before. You know, the mention of, oh, the, you know, prison industry, no. And we're able to introduce to them that there is so much more happening in Canyon City than just the prison industry. Tech Start was an amazing opportunity to bring awareness to the innovative new diversity of jobs and quality of jobs that we're attracting here in our area. And I think maybe just anecdotally, maybe some of that eyes opening as far as our high school having some, being one of the highest high schools to graduate kids with college credits. And there are opportunities for internships and pathways and so many things. As at the end of the tour, we stopped by the winery and one of the folks who'd never been to Canyon City before said, "I see you have a lot of sister cities. You should be a sister city with someone in Italy where the Benedictine, the saints, the Benedictine saint from Scholastica and then the abbey where they came from." I guess they were twins. Says, "Then you could go and visit them and actually have some really good wine." And like, "You've never been here before, but we're here and I'm gonna, and you're gonna have some samples and you're gonna realize that we don't need to go to Italy. We already have some of the best in the country." And it's nice to have that opportunity to kind of change some perspectives. And there's a lot of heads nodding and a lot of wills returning and some excitement to invite them to come back and sit down at the table and really find out ways that we could connect to help some of the projects we're wanting to see to move forward and how they can be a part of that and help those move forward. So that was, that was definitely really exciting. Any other announcements from council members? Okay, well, I do have a proclamation. This week is the National Engineers Week. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick is honoring that with his engineering hat. We're glad to have an engineer on our City Council. It's an important skill set to have. And I'll just read a small part of that proclamation. And it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that February 16th through the 22nd is hereby designated as National Engineers Week in the city of Canyon City and hereby urge the educational community to reach out to our youth with the message of this Engineers Week and invite the professional societies and the general population of our city to participate in discussions with their friends and children regarding the opportunities, incentives, and rewards of the engineering profession." And we are proud to have that and that the Engineering Week, they're having a banquet and they are raising money to give scholarships for future engineers. And that was another thing we were able to brag about on our tour, is showing some of our high school students already getting some pretty extensive engineering experience. And that is a good thing to have in Canyon City. Next, we have our Rotary presentation. And Ed, I'd like to invite you and your cohorts to come on up and we'd love to hear some more. Lisa, do you want to come up as well?
I, did you have the video, Madam Mayor, of throwing those people into the trolley? I'd like to see that.
I, you know what? I tried to get it, because it was awesome to see them all filing in and off and they're all excited and they had their coffee from the bean peddler and my video didn't turn out, so I went through some remorse about that.
Well, before we present this check, I'm going to have Lisa from your History Center give you an overview of what the Rotary Club of Canyon City is helping to finance. So Lisa, could you explain?
Mayor, City Council, Lisa Stutes from the Royal Gorge Regional Museum History Center. I've been working with the Rotary to develop three interpretive panels that will be put out on Main Street regarding the history of Canyon City and different aspects. This is a project that had started, I want to say, six years ago as an alliance between the city and the Fremont County Historical Society and the Fremont County Heritage Commission to design panels that would go in front of old buildings and their storefronts that were not being occupied. A couple of them are currently inside Tailored West. Two of them eventually got made into smaller interpretive panels that are currently in the 400 block of Main Street. So this is a project that has gone on for a little while. Now we have three more that are going to be going out on Main Street. So I want to thank the Rotary for continuing on helping out in providing a little more history to the public. Thank you.
And so, this funding that we're giving a check of $3,000 to the city to help fund the placement of these historical pedestals and based upon some topic matter that Lisa had already had worked with the Heritage Commission, the three subject matters are the prison history, the historical buildings at Fourth and Main, and the movie industry. So those are the three topic areas that'll be featured on these pedestals. And Lisa, do we have any idea of, are they in creative production now?
They are currently being made and we'll hope to receive them within the next two months.
And so, these proceeds come from the Canyon City and Florence Rotary Club's annual Duck Derby on the 4th of July. And I, my fellow Rotarians here are Secretary George Turner and our President-elect Rudle Myrdleman. And Councilman Hamrick is our other Rotarian with us tonight. So if anyone out there ever bought a Duck Derby ticket, this is an example of how we use those proceeds to benefit the community at large. So we're looking forward. And the three pedestals that we're helping to finance will have the Rotary emblem on the three pedestals. So we're anxious to see them erected in the coming months and appreciate Ryan, your city administrator, working with us because the city is financing the cost of the installation and anything a sundry above the $3,000 contribution. So we appreciate that as well. So can we gather for a photo?
Absolutely. We're so grateful to be able to accept this generous donation from our community. Your Rotary symbol is on our pavilion at Centennial Park already and we're very happy to have it continue on to Main Street as well. Thank you for all you do to uplift...
One other thing, some of the Rotary funds outside of the Duck Derby will have to be expended in the coming year. I don't know if any of you've noticed, but our holiday star on Skyline Drive took a hit during the high winds of January 10th to the 13th and it collapsed in about three pieces. So we're going to have to find some time and some physical effort from some younger Rotarians to go up on Skyline Drive to resurrect our Christmas star.
Lisa's got the panels.
I wish I had one, I wish I had two. Eleven? I think it's about now. Eleven. It's going nowhere.
Got one? Yeah, the one on your side. Good grief.
Can I do another one?
Absolutely. Three to one.
One to one.
Four. Ten miles away.
Thank you. Most of those were already crafted by the Lisa and the Heritage. So we made some minor modifications and reviewed the scripts and most of them were already done. Yeah. George! George! What?
I need a handshake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah. And let's go ahead and move on to a report on the consent agenda. Ryan, if we can turn that, chime over to you.
Mayor and members of council, on the consent agenda, item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular City Council meeting on February 3rd, special City Council meeting on January 30th, the Community Relations meeting, and then there's February 3rd Executive Session, the February 5th Planning Commission interviews, and General Government meeting on February 5th. Item 8B is an update to some IT job descriptions. 8C, awards bid 0120 Stormwater Capital Improvement Project, Dawson Ranch Culvert CIP, to avalanche excavating of Canyon City, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $1,081,074.50. 8D, awards bid 1720 Water Meters and Water Meter Registers to Core and Main of Henderson, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $52,741.50. 8E, authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement for professional services with Ascendant Strategy Management Group in an amount not to exceed $17,000. 8F, declares vehicle surplus and approval of disposal. 8G is the monthly budget summary and 8H is to receive and file a list of bills.
So, on my 8E, it says not to exceed $17. Do we need to make that amended?
Yeah, we'll need to make that amendment and that is correct in the staff memo, $17,000.
Are there any other additions or corrections? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you. I just had one comment. The, on our monthly budget summary, the, as, I know that you watch this closely, Ryan, but to help the council members understand, would you, in this budget summary, could you break out any attorney's fees that we're generating over and above our retainer so that we understand where we're going with that? Where we are in spending on legal issues.
Yeah, we can add something like that or have a report on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
I'll start backwards. Relative to general expenditures, page 6, street projects, I think I asked this before, but it looks like that we're 74% of what was funded or something? Is that right? That's total, but on the street projects, we're at 47.1%? I thought I'd sent an email last month in terms of what was budgeted and versus what was expensed, what didn't get completed? Or why the difference?
Yeah, and there were still some bills that were coming in for the end of the year, but I can confirm that for you and get back to you.
Unless somebody else does.
I'll have it. Yeah, go ahead.
Are we, are we on revenues?
Yeah, again, these numbers do not reflect December sales tax revenues. The rough numbers that we're looking at is an additional $650,000 coming in for December. So that is well and above the approved budget shortfall.
Okay. So why does it say December 31st?
It's, you know, it's as of the end of the year, but again, those revenues lag about a month, month and a half before they're, you know, they're certified.
Under Stormwater, page 11, what's the $36,000 in impact fee revenue? Am I reading that correctly?
Yep. Yeah, and I would have to get back to you. I don't know off the top of my head, Adams here.
Those are the impact fee collections on building permits. You may recall, a year or so ago, we switched from collecting impact fees at time of subdivision to time of building construction. And it's on a square foot, based on a square foot and previous surface, just like the utility fee.
Okay.
I want to say it's 25, almost 25 cents a square foot.
Okay. Can I still go or no?
Sure.
Moving on to cash disbursements, page 2, construction use tax, it looks like we refunded $30,000? Is that, am I understanding that right? Or is that what we sent to the county?
If they're disbursements, that would be what went to the county, to the Fremont County Finance Office. That would be what we collected for use tax on behalf of the county and sent over.
All right. I was going to ask if you could expand a little bit more, just for the benefit of council and probably the audience too, about the Strategic Planning Consultant Agreement, mainly because that's going to be an important part of that retreat that we're scheduling for City Council and having that vision for the next five years for Canyon City and also our accountability in delivering on that vision.
Yeah, so, you know, in the past, we did a five-year strategic plan. It was, you know, setting those five-year strategic priorities and those goals. This is, you know, a similar process where we're going to set those five-year strategic plan goals and objectives, but taking it a step further and actually identifying key performance indicators. So in the past, this has mostly stayed up at the department head level to implement. We're actually looking at ways to try and see that strategic plan integrate and flow all the way through the organization and developing those key performance indicators is going to be an important part of that. So the methodology that we're, you know, we're using here with this, with this plan, it's called a balanced scorecard. And, you know, it's looking at even metrics across the organization and developing those priorities and those key performance indicators.
So, and I would like to add to that, that as far as having that new methodology for our five-year business plan and the accountability, in the past, in our strategic plan, it was really subjective on if we had accomplished that or not. Now it'll be much more black and white. We could even have it on our website showing we had a goal of filling this many potholes as of this minute, on this day, this is how many potholes that we have filled, this is how much the percentage of that goal that we've completed. And that can be across the spectrum, across all departments. And so if there's some areas of the department where we want to see some improvement, that that's going to be visible to anybody and everybody, what those goals are and if they're getting accomplished.
Right. And this strategic plan is the developing of those goals. We are looking at some additional software to be able to implement and put on the website and have more transparency and accountability and that'll be a separate agreement that comes to council.
And I also would like to thank you as far as digging down all the way to where the boots are on the ground for part of those solutions and identifying problems and also solutions. Because I would totally have to agree with you in the opportunities that I've had to visit some of our departments, that that's where oftentimes our best solutions are coming from, because they're doing it every day and they can see exactly what needs to be done. And it's our job to be able to, be able to bring that to fruition if we can and if it is reasonable. And so, I'm glad to see that as a part of the equation. Councilmember Meisner?
So relative to this strategic plan, what portion of, which I assume is the following couple of pages of section E, what portion of that plan are you talking about accomplishing at the council retreat or whatever you're going to call it now?
Yeah, so there'll be, you know, overview of the balanced scorecard methodology. There's going to be identifying those key objectives and, you know, those high-level strategic goals that council wants to, you know, work towards the next five, you know, five years. know, five years. So, you know, it'll be, you know, identifying those, you know, top five, you know, five to six goals and then putting some objectives behind it. And then from there, it will, it will go to staff working with those consultants to identify what those key performance indicators are in order to achieve those objectives and those goals.
And then how does that relate, coming back to council? I mean...
So it'll be ongoing to, you know, to select those KPIs and then having measurements against them. So, you know, past several meetings, you know, we've, we've heard some feedback, especially from councilman Meisner, about having some quarterly reports around certain topics and things like that, specific to stormwater, you know, most recently. But, you know, generating what those, you know, and determining what those KPIs are and then putting that reporting metrics behind it. So it might, it won't even be necessarily a quarterly report, but something that could be updated on a monthly basis, so you can actually see on a monthly basis where some of those key performance indicators are.
And maybe another part of that answer, councilman Meisner, is that KPI, they're going to be going to the different department heads and doing interviews. They're also going to be interviewing some of the council members and other staff. And they're going to be doing a lot of data collection and studying beforehand that, all that, that depth of research and background information, and they're going to bring it to us at our council retreat. And then we can take it from there as far as where we want to, to pu- to push those goals to achieve the betterment for Canyon City.
Right. And, you know, it, you know, you have the, the goals from the last five-year plan. It might not necessarily be changing those entirely, but refining them to, to be more focused and more results oriented.
And Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the stormwater capital improvement project for Dawson Ranch is actually, exceeds the amount that we, that we had estimated. And when the original bids came in, we saw that, our engineering department went back, tried to pare down the project. And that results in this bid. And the, the point, the important point about that is that there are no further cutbacks available here. And so this is still above what our original budget was, but it's just the market and what, what we can get people to do it for.
Thank you, Mayor.
What did we budget on that? Eight hundred?
For Dawson, it was just over 800 that we budgeted. The first bid, the first time we went through bids, it came at 1.8 million dollars. And then we had to readjust the expectations for that project. And then we rebid it again in hopes that we'd have more competitive bids and also a better time of year. And it still came over budget, but not as much as it had before.
Well, where's the money? The money's got to come from one of those other projects. Am I not correct?
That's, that's correct. We'll have to, you know, either design or value engineer or even scale back one of the other projects.
So what I don't understand about that whole thing, and, and councilman Hammer reiterated this, we're saying we can't reduce it any further at this point. I'm not sure I understand that.
It, it won't, it won't have any impact if we reduce it anymore. It won't have any substantial results.
Yeah, and it might make sense. Yeah, Adam.
And we do have, we actually, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, there's quite a few members in the audience tonight from Dawson Ranch that are particularly interested in seeing this move forward. And we have a couple who'd like to speak to us as well. So Adam, can you give us some more background information on this?
Yeah, so we, we do believe that we've, we've trimmed the project to a point where there's diminishing returns if we trim it anymore. And at that point, we would be, it's not that those improvements wouldn't be good improvements, it's just that we would, we know that it's going to be a while before we have additional funding. And so it'd be, it'd be even further down the road before we'd ever see a result from those improvements is, which is not what we want to do. The one thing, other thing I wanted to note on this, even though we did get, get only one bid again from the same bidder, even with the, the cuts that we made in the scope of the project, we still realized about a $300,000 savings in unit pricing. So rebidding it did help us with the pricing as well.
Adam, do you see that we are going to have to take it away from other projects? Are we going to, just going to have to scale back some of the magnitude of some of those projects? Or keep our fingers crossed that we'll have some good bids, which is...
We're going to plan for both. We'll, we'll plan for both. So we've already talked to the other consultant that's working on the other two projects. They, they, of course, since the beginning of looking, have been looking at some cost-saving options. And so, and there's things that we're finding also during the survey and so forth that changes that we have to make and so forth. So we're, we're going to hope for both. Maybe, maybe the other projects will be big enough to attract some more out-of-town bidders. That was one of the feedbacks, some of the feedback we got this time was, there was some concern by some of the bigger bidders that they couldn't compete with the local bidder. And again, the other big item of feedback we got was the timing. Again, everyone's, everyone's swamped.
So do you feel like if we combine some of the future projects and potentially one, that we could attract some more competition?
Well, the next two projects will be big enough, I think, in them, in themselves. We had originally intended to bid those together, but we are still flushing through some of that stuff. Both of those projects are, well, one is about 50% design, the other's about 30%. We have some strategic meetings tomorrow with the ditch company and the county on the rideaway, so we'll, we'll know even more on those in a couple of weeks.
And I will say, I have been kind of putting a little bug in the ear of our county commissioners. They're helping us fund one of our projects that is on East Main, because East Main affects county as well as city. They're helping to pay for that project and have kind of mentioned that we, we might have to sit down and have some more discussions with them to see if there's a possibility, if they can help a little bit more to see those through. So as soon as we find out where we're at with that, I think we need to make sure we, we start those discussions. Because we really, that $8 million that we did the COPs on, we have to make sure that every single penny is put to good work and gets real results for our citizens. I would like to go ahead and invite some of our citizens who've had a request to speak. We'll go ahead and start with Tom, if you can please come up to the mic. And introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to address city council.
I have a specific question on the culvert pipe. And I don't know if this is the place to ask it. Type of pipe they're going to put in? Who can I ask?
Adam, come on up. I'm glad you're here tonight.
I could probably talk to him later.
Tom.
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll give you my phone number.
Yeah. I'll talk to him later, okay?
Okay, so, okay. Absolutely. And then I will invite Mike Gramowski. He's a representative of Dawson Ranch as a whole, as the HOA president. Both he and Marvin have been really instrumental in studying this from the very beginning when the engineers started coming, as well as coming to city council consistently demanding that something get done for Dawson Ranch.
Well, I don't know about the man, the request. How about that?
Well, I remember a pretty big city hall filled with really angry residents, probably about a year or so ago.
My name is Mike Gramowski. I'm the Dawson Ranch HOA chairperson. First, I'd like to thank council and then the city staff for getting this project to the point where bidding's going to be considered. This project will make significant improvements in Dawson Ranch. It'll cause a good percentage of the stormwater that currently wipes out about 150 homes with each major storm or wipes out, does damage to 150 properties. It'll help all of those homes and properties, because the water's going to be channeled through natural drainages. There'll be nine culverts, yeah, nine culverts that'll be changed out in Dawson Ranch, and they're in key areas where the water needs to be more controlled. Otherwise, all it does is run down Cedar Ridge, Greenhorn, and the other streets and the property in the neighborhood, and it does a lot of damage. Relative to the, the budget, it is $200,000 over what was allocated last year. The fact is that if, if we don't do that work now, it's only going to cost more in the future. It's never going to get any cheaper. In addition to that, this council will, will have to ante up the money to clean out culverts and then clean up roads and whatnot in each major storm. And you're going to spend $200,000 doing that over time. So my vote, if I were in your shoes, would be to help fix the problem rather than kicking it down the road. Thank you for your consideration. Questions?
Looks like we're good, but thank you for being here and representing Dawson. And are we ready for a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I move we approve the agenda for our February 17th, 2020, a meeting and the consent agenda with the revision of item E from $17 to $17,000.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Meisner?
I just remind council and everybody else, including the HOA, we originally had $8 million to spend. We allocated that between a number of different projects. And so now we're taking money from one of those projects and putting it towards another project. So somewhere along the line, somebody's going to come up short. And fundamentally, you should be reducing, you, you need to hold the numbers to each of those projects. We know that the future projects are going to come in over budget. We're going to have to trim. If you're talking about impacting 150 homes, maybe we only impact 140 homes.
Any other items of discussion? Then I call for a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the administrators' report now. Ryan?
Mayor and members of council, thank you. Want to give some employee kudos and congratulations to Elliot Van Dyke, who's been promoted to sergeant. We had four internal candidates for the sergeant position, and we're happy to be able to promote from within the organization. We have been, begun the process for replacing Mr. Van Dyke in the co-responder program. We've made that position available internally, but, you know, if, if we do not have any interest internally, we may have to look externally, outside the organization. We have a couple new hires. Rebecca Mestes has been hired for the water billing department, and Brandy Fowler starts on Wednesday. She's going to be the new grant writer for the city. We currently have five open positions, the economic development manager, the main street program manager, purchasing technician, which were interviewed on Friday, senior arborist technician, and of course, police officers. Water department fixed a couple of leaks on rudd. It was a four-inch cast iron line, estimated to be between 80 and 100 years old. And then we've also received a $10,000 grant from the Department of Local Affairs regarding our downtown Colorado Inc., DCI, for participation in their challenge studio. Of course, item six, we discussed earlier, which was the federal agency tour.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Really, really appreciate all that's been moving forward at city hall. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to item number 10 on the agenda. That's the second reading and adoption of ordinance two, series of 2020. And this is a mending sections 3.1203 for the municipal code concerning minor operated businesses.
And this is a second reading. We've not received any additional comments from the public, and we would, staff would ask that city council approve on second reading.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance two, series 2020, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, amending sections. Oh my gosh, I have to read all that.
I don't think you have to read all of those.
Concerning the city municipal code concerning minor operated businesses.
Second.
And there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And I call for a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. So now item 11 is another second reading and adoption. This is for ordinance three of 2020. And this is concerning plan development, zone district and plan development district plans.
Again, this is a second reading. This is for the deregulation of the plan development district, cutting it from 23 pages down to about five pages. We've not received any additional public comments, and again, we would ask city council to approve on second reading.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say that I, that I have received unofficial comments much in favor of this.
And I would confirm that too, yes. Everyone's pretty excited to see that happening. We're looking forward to seeing some more of that coming to our table soon. So is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number three, series of 2020, by title on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And I call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 12 is an introduction and first reading for ordinance four, series of 2020. And this is our annual opportunity, or biannual opportunity, to appoint Larry Dean Allen as our municipal judge and increasing his compensation for such services. Jim, would you like me to turn the time over to you, since you are on the committee to oversee the contracts?
You'd like to.
I, I could.
Just for the public's information, the council's, as Mayor Smith had mentioned, this is a biannual appointment. We're, we're trying to change, one of the complications we've got is the fact that that agreement needs to be reappointed in the, technically by the first meeting after, in January after a general election. And for the new council members that come on staff of each of those general elections, I personally think that that's a real challenge for them, for, for us to ask them to step forward and, and reappoint a number of appointed positions. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get those appointment terms to be mid-year to give those new council members the opportunity to kind of get a better feel, one of council, government, and those particular appointments that we're involved in. This particular agreement, other than changing the term to what, 30 months or something like that, makes it an adjustment in compensation, which is appropriate relative to the previous agreement and cost of living, essentially cost of living adjustments, and specifically has a cost of living adjustment built into the agreement that's equivalent to any other city employee. Other than that, it's pretty much the same agreement that we've worked with in the past.
Any other comments or questions from council?
There's a, there's a somewhat cloudy... The appointment, as I understand it, would still need to happen in 2022 in January for this, for the, for the new judge. And if, and if we appointed a new judge, we would then cancel, we would then terminate this agreement and create a new agreement for the new judge. So there's some kind of weird things that would have to happen here in 2022, or at any time that we replace the judge. But in particular, in 2022, January technically, we again would still have to appoint the judge, but we've got some flexibility there, I think, in June to, to make some adjustments. I think that...
One of the complications, and this is the only position that is like this, because of the separation of powers, you can only remove a judge not with, at the end of his or her term, for cause. So the way the contract is structured, it actually gives the council an opportunity in June of 2022 to change judges theoretically, even though it would otherwise be in the middle of a term, because the council, it would be not for cause, because it would be the first opportunity for a... the first opportunity for a new council to do a reappointment. So, by doing this contract for a thirty-month term, giving that new council the opportunity would by definition not be a removal for cause. And that's, that's sort of the gray area that we tried to clarify in the contract.
Thank you. Councilmember Meisner?
Then, then the other thing that would happen is, is that in June of 2020, that new contract would in all likelihood be a twenty, would be a two-year agreement.
Correct.
And that would get us on a June cycle.
That is exactly right.
June 2020?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. June 2022, we...
Yes.
That council would ideally do a twen, a two-year agreement?
Yeah.
And that would put us on a June to June cycle.
And you would still do the January appointment?
Appointment.
But the 2022, the contract term would be an, an opportunity for a new council to evaluate and it be a reappointment or a determination not to reappoint without there being cause?
The other thing that it does, the appointment of the, of, the three appointments that council is responsible for are actually in charter. And we do not have the authority, I'm going to call it that, to change charter. To change charter is a change that would have to go before the voters. But this does give us the flexibility to adhere to the, of the, to the intent of the charter, but then still give council some flexibility to make some changes.
And Councilmember Meisner, would you like to entertain a motion?
If we're done with discussion. Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance four of 2020, an ordinance appointing Larry Dean Allen as municipal judge and increasing his compensation for such services.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And I call for a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, it carries. Council...
I failed this, I failed, and I apologize to Judge Allen. At least over the time that I've been involved, I, I just want to publicly state that, that I think that Judge Allen has done an extremely good job. Not necessarily from, from a standpoint of being a judge, but taking that whole position to heart and trying to do what he believes is best interest of, of not only the court but the community and the people that are in front of him. He, he's, he's not there with a gavel slamming it down. He's trying to find a solution that's going to help that individual, but then also enforce the rules of society.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So, I want to kind of expand on what Jim has said. One thing that, that he spoke about was the change in our, in our culture of crime. And he hasn't just taken it in stride, he's, he's gone above and beyond to try to fix any issues that, that come up that have, that have been a result of those changes in our, in our culture of crime. So, I also want to commend him for doing a great job and for taking our community very seriously and to do it without a raise last year. So, he hasn't, he hasn't lost his love for his job, so.
Here, here, and I, Judge Allen, I hope you're listening tonight to all the compliments that are given on your behalf. We thank you. With that, before I adjourn, officially adjourn, just remind, we do have a meeting Wednesday starting at five o'clock. Two thousand eighteen building codes is on the agenda. We also have an executive session. So, I will adjourn and see you Wednesday.